And then I assume for tomorrow, I'm not gonna come in tomorrow because that's out of place.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good, okay. You'll know what to put on the city council then, that's all I have. It'll be the art one if it passes and then the reasons. Because they call them, okay, but just city council is a natural.
But they don't see council next week, it's just a different thing. Oh, yeah, okay, so I'm like, I'm not worried about it, I can take the day off and call again.
I made that mistake once I showed up and nobody was here.
Oh.
Just because you get in a routine.
I guess this.
That is nice though too because it falls right on like today or like where we stay.
Yeah, my Thursday's always tied up. I thought I just showed up and nobody was here.
That's true, it goes right into a, I believe you can.
It does.
That is nice.
That would be next Thursday and October.
So I copy these with work on.
Yeah.
Green line.
Green line live?
Oh, yeah, you guys, you are gonna be recorded on YouTube.
Is this my good side?
Yeah, direct, direct line.
I don't have the good sides anymore.
Yeah, go for it. Um, Mackenzie usually goes in the office, shouldn't stay for our work sessions. Who knows if that's legal, but she doesn't stay in here.
I only had two hands, so.
Do you guys want a water or anything?
Yeah, would you like, got a fridge in there, it's cold water in there.
Hey, welcome back. You know, your boy Shane McFarland saved my life today.
Did he? Good.
Yes, and I heard he got a haircut and let go of his mullet.
He did, yeah, he looks respectable now.
Yeah, that was the first thing he told me. He's like, I don't even care what your question is, I got a haircut.
Yeah.
Like, thank you.
I came back on Monday. I was like, who's this guy?
Who does that, huh? You gotta go full in if you're gonna go mullet. Just keep it going.
When are they starting that irrigation thing over there?
Um, once the water turns off, so.
Oh, that's true, they gotta do it, and that was a dumb question.
Yeah, so once we get, um, we'll start gearing up in September and then they turn the water off mid-October.
They work on it in the wintertime and.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
You'll drive around the thing and they did that.
That was a pain in the butt.
But you know what? They're gonna have you do it again next time there's a problem, next time it comes up.
We've already gotten three calls from them. What are we gearing up for next year?
I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. Let me get out of the way.
Did you hear of anyone else from the city council that was gonna come?
Katie just walked in.
Oh, okay. Like Katie said she was coming. Let's give them a couple more minutes for you guys.
Can I have a couple minutes to get some background about this mixed use ordinance?
Yes.
Bring up some of the points that are probably.
Do you want them to start or you wanna start, you wanna do it first?
I'd, I'd kinda rather just sort of talk about the ordinance and parts of the ordinance that are particularly relevant to this, okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna let him do a little bit.
Then maybe they can respond directly to those, so.
Yeah, well, do you want them to give an overview of what their thoughts are, um, just on a concept?
We'll end up converging to the same place one way, so.
How do you start, Lou?
Yeah, I like, I'm glad they can send that ordinance out.
Yeah, absolutely.
That really helped. And I would not, I guess we'll bring these two pieces off.
Do you wanna sit at the table? You have to sit at the table. Yeah, come sit over. Perfect. Was there anyone else walking in while you were? Okay, okay, we're gonna start then. I'm gonna, so this is Jeremy and Jared. They are the developers of this property and they're going to present what product they have and what their vision is for the property. So have at it.
Did you say you were going first or something?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
She makes the rules.
Whatever I'm told, but I thought you say you were.
What, what I, what I was doing is just sending some background for this ordinance. And a lot of the members of the planning commission went around when this was developed, but this originated from a proposal that was made for the Randall property, which is now Randy Mary's property. It was called Sugar Farms. Because that they were going to have kind of a central area, which would be open plaza, parks, and then it would be bounded around the development by townhouses, uh, business offices, retail shops, restaurants, or whatever. The idea was it was going to be kind of a community concept. That's what, that was the idea. The people that lived in the townhouses could walk a short distance to get to some of the retail shops and so forth. So that's, and it, it, they proposed, proposed a plan, we loved it. And then the fine disappeared and the plan disappeared. But we developed the ordinance for it and the ordinance has been on the books ever since, okay? So that's kind of where this came from. What I'd like to do is point out some pieces of this ordinance, which I think are relevant to this, okay? And I'd very much like to hear your responses to some of these, okay? They, and I'm gonna go right down the ordinance and, and the purpose statements, it says that it will reflect a town center philosophy. In other words, you kinda have a center in the middle and then townhouses and buildings around it. That's what was meant by this town-centered philosophy, including excellence in architecture, streets, tapes, talked about public spaces and so forth, okay? Important in this was the development agreement, and I'll come up with that later when we talk about it. Development plan, development agreement, I'm sure you've spent plenty of time looking at that. It was supposed to have residential, commercial, office, and public space. That was the concept of the design. Those elements were supposed to be there. It says residential use shall not constitute more than 50% of the gross acreage of the entire project. That was very important and the philosophy was here. We didn't want a developer to come in, develop the residential piece and get tired of the project and leave the commercial piece, which may be more problematic or whatever. And then suddenly we're stuck with the half of a mixed use and it's, we only have the residential half. So that was very, very important in this and, and so we felt, we argued balance back and forth and came up with 50/50 as the, as the rule. Uh, and the 50 is residential can't be more than 50. It can be less than 50, but it can't be more than 50, okay? Uh, this central area that was in visualized would, would, could include all kinds of amenities. And there mentioned here possibility of swimming pool, todd lots. I noticed you had that clubhouse, private and public parks, trails, plazas, and so forth. So there were a lot of options for this public space concept part of it. Okay, another thing, the development of the commercial and residential areas shall coincide with each other. Some people might know exactly what that meant. The original language was that they would be developed simultaneously. In other words, the concept is you don't come in and develop the residential piece and then develop the commercial piece. It would probably anticipate that any project like this would occur in phases. And in phase one, there'd be a residential piece and a commercial piece. And in phase two, there'd be a residential piece and a commercial piece. So that it wasn't residential, 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 and then finally commercial. So that's what that, that's what that particular part meant. It says after the development plan, this is very important, I think, to our discussion. After the development plan had been approved prior to rezoning the property, so there was a definite sequence. The development plan had to be approved before we ever take any action on rezoning. We don't rezon and then come back and look at the development plan. The developer shall enter into a development agreement with the city and that's spelled out in some of this. Uh, another interesting thing that has direct bearing on what at least I thought I saw in here is under permitted uses, there are several. Uh, I won't go into that. The conditional uses include daycare centers and temporary lodging. They do not include light manufacturing.
And I'm a manufacturer too in that permitted uses language. The very last sentence of that is no other permitted uses are allowed.
Yeah, we were emphatic about that.
So that rules out light.
And, and my first glance at this was it looked like a residential zone with a quasi-manufacturing zone attached to the end of it. And that clearly wasn't, we, we were looking at these being more integrated, having a more central concept. And clearly, light manufacturing wasn't even on the, wasn't even on the board, okay? Which is an important thing to realize. And that's just stated in the, in the thing. Uh, another thing is density, and I didn't have your acreage, so I couldn't calculate it. We said it's not to exceed six dwelling units per gross acreage of the development. The meaning there is gross acreage of the residential part of the development, not the whole development. Okay, because if you had 50/50 and you used the whole development, that could translate to 12 dwelling units per acre. And that's not at all what we had in mind. I have no idea what you got here because there was no acreages and hopefully you can address that. But, but that's an important thing to understand is we didn't want the density in the residential piece to exceed six units per acre, okay? Um, let's see. The commercial businesses that integrate into the adjacent residential uses. We wanted some attempt to integrate these two things instead of having a residential parcel over there and completely, and completely separated from it, the commercial parcel. So the integration was an important part of this concept. Uh, anyway, I thought I'd just mention that, so you kinda get a feel for the intent of the ordinance. I see some potential clashes with what the ordinance is saying and what I see in front of me. So this is something that'll be useful when I hear what you have to say about it.
Okay, from there, before any other questions from anyone, I want you guys to give us the vision for this project. So explain how you got here, everything there.
Um, well, we've both lived in far west for a while. We don't anymore. Um, I live over in Merrick Sladeville, but I did live here for 11 years. And so I've been in some of these meetings and I've been, both of us do development in the area and the surrounding cities as well. Um, and so we understand some of these concerns. They're, they're not just brought up here, they're brought up everywhere. Um, right now, we're doing some commercial right off of 2700 in Pleasant View. By, I don't know if you've noticed where that Rush Family Fund Center's going up. We're doing some stuff there, mm-hmm. And so we've, you know, we've been doing a bit with that. I think that's something that cities like to see. They like to see products like that. And so we, we see that, um, we, we dealt with warehousing and different things like that. So we've, we've been to a lot of these cities and, uh, sorry I'm getting sidetracked, but with far west, we, I think we understand when you read through this, all these things you just brought up, like, we understand that. We under, we understand where your mind is going with that and where, where a lot of the concerns and stuff are. Uh, for us, um, we've had much of this property for a long time and we've had several different things drawn up on this. And, you know, timing has a lot to do with what happens on property. And when we looked at your future land use, that's where you have highlighted the mixed use, is right here. And so that's interesting to hear you talk about where it was originally, why it was created. And, um, we like to be creative and we, we, I'll say this, we do want to work with you. We don't have a problem moving some of this stuff around. We do have strong opinions on some things. But we, we want this to work and we're, we're willing to just have these discussions and work with you to, to make something that we're all happy with. We wanna be happy with it as well. Now, having said that, this particular place is, has its challenges to be able to. It's a great piece when we're talking about moderate housing and we're trying to get some higher density. This is a great place in the city for that and I'll always stand by that. But it does present some challenges when we want to do a lot of these, um, some of these ideas like you're saying, to be able to integrate some of these, these wants or some of these amenities and stuff. So we'll, we'll have to be careful at how we do that. Um, I can kinda go down the line a little bit. When we're talking about commercial, this is, we have zero frontage, so we have to be very careful, um, with what we do choose uh, down here. And we do feel like we can be successful as a city and as developers with the commercial component. But we also, we have to be careful that we, we don't set this area up to fail with the types of businesses we're putting in there. And so we're open for discussion on that, but we have zero frontage right there for the types of businesses that I think you're talking about. And so, um, that's why that is drawn up that way for right now. Because we also know there is a need for it. We're in the industry and we know people are really hungry for that. We do feel like we can build it, so it's very clean and can work with this. I, I feel very strongly about that. But you brought up another thing, and, and sorry, then I'll stop. You can ask me questions. But we understand that, that, that fear that every city has, that everyone just wants that residential. And they just want that, they wanna forget about the commercial. With this particular piece, we have to have both of these accesses to do anything, just to start. So we would anticipate, we'd actually have this done probably first and be able to get the access with, excuse me, utilities and everything over to the residential portion of this. So, and we're fine in the, in the development agreement, whatever we need to do to show that. But we, we're not intimidated by the commercial piece, I will say that. Now, if we have to really move this around to satisfy what the city does, we, we could have some concerns and stuff there as far as can we feel it, can it work and everything? It, it could be pretty challenging. If we have this product, I have zero worry about it. And I, and again, I don't have a problem with, you know, making some restrictions or whatever. If we need to get into the details and, and come to a compromise on that to make that work, I don't know where all that compromise comes. I mean, we'll, we'll just look to you for that. But we, we don't feel like we've overdone on the density. Now, the gross acreage, you can see that we're over on the, only thing that I think that we're really out of bounds on as far as that would go is that. Um, but as far as the, and I'll have to get back to you on the units per acre. I didn't ask, and I meant to, I had it on some notes, but we're about 3.8 units per acre. But I don't know if that counted this or not, so I'll have to look. It may have counted this and I'll double check.
I'm telling you, it did.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I played, I've done some guesswork on, the best I can give you is like 7.7 or eight units per acre. I, I could never play around with this and get it below that.
I put it in GIS and so you've got 79.38 acres between the two lots. Putting this overlay on the county reporters website and lining up where with, and this was with landmarks here with your residential. Your residential is about 44 to 47 acres. Right now, 50/50 would be 39.69 acres. So you're a little heavy on.
We do have three more acres here that we need to add to this. Um, but yeah, so we, I mean, we can, we can work with that. I don't feel like for this project that we've just really. I know this is, this is something very big for far west city. I'm not saying that. This is a big project and it's a new concept.
We're, we're on virgin territory.
But I don't feel like necessarily we've, we've, we like this, we're open for discussion, we're open for some changes. But we're not just trying to shove, it, it's a huge piece, but we're not trying to just shove.
Can I mention?
Me doing this in the reporters website, so, and I felt like I couldn't get a good gauge for things just because there wasn't a lot of like details on the map, but.
Yeah, we're, we're in this concept and we, and we, we're fine to just keep adding, you know, more details there. Yep.
Yep. Can I just mention something that's bigger than this piece? If you look on our general plan, there's this big chunk of which you are about one-fifth down here, okay? I'm guessing about one-fifth, I'm doing some A-ball. Now, our master plan calls for either two 10-acre parks or one 20-acre park. And so I thought, okay, I'll say yours is one-fifth of that. Sort of one-fifth commitment to open space, which translates to four acres of open space, not that.
Sure.
And so maybe one thing that will help this, to make it look more central and more open and so forth, is to integrate more your piece of that open space that the master plan calls for. This right here is a, is a pretty dense block residential area with a very token park there. I don't get too excited about linear detention basins being very useful parks, you know, because you never know how well they work.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. We've talked to Geneva about this and we've bounced back and forth because we really didn't know what we, we really probably needed to look to you because we read that and we realized that we're going to need to incorporate that. And by no means, I mean, I think we could be close with this, but we're not saying we're, we're done. Uh, we left that for a reason, um, which I can talk about later. But I think we realized that we can add some more green space to this, but we didn't wanna carry the whole burden of that either. So if we wanna go up a percentage, we would, we would love to do that and we can add four acres of green space to that.
It's, it's just a concept. It just seems like there were some open space integrated into this that was consistent with sort of your piece of that bigger acreage. This is gonna be an enormous block of land in far west that doesn't have a park anywhere near it. So we're very concerned about that.
Would you rather see a bunch of four-acre parks or would you rather put a 20?
My view is I'd rather see a, a larger one than, little dinky ones are maintenance people hate. They're not big enough to do any good. I, I would personally, and I'm only expressing one person's view, I'd much rather see you commit to a, a one larger one rather than little bits and pieces all over the place.
Too decent.
Or yeah, but you understand what I'm saying.
Spread where you have the higher density and the single family.
And for our parks and recreation master plan, this area to the city border is called out as two big parks.
Yeah, center of reports.
It would need to complement that and as well as take into consideration the trail network that we have planned. And, you know, kind of blend well with that intention and the future of having those parks.
Well, should we just, um, talk, you know, take some time to talk about that for a minute? Because that is a big item and like Jared said, what would you rather? We're open to do whatever. But if we're going to be a part of a 10-acre park, do we need to look at one of these areas and give four and C? I, I don't know how, without the future.
You'd wanna continue.
You'd wanna here. I mean, conceptually, you, you don't want it here in the corners. You want it here.
And our idea was, you know, you, like you said, we're one-fifth of this whole thing.
Yeah.
Do you want your large park next to a large canal? And next to manufacturing or do you?
No, no, I would, I would get it as close to the, to the core of this big residential area, but that's.
Exclude ours from a large park than if you want it more towards the core.
Well.
I don't think so. It doesn't, doesn't ring a bell.
They drive out there, okay? They have a nice big park right in the center of town and built everything around it. And it's their hub.
Now, the piece you don't have is you don't have the other parcel, the other four fifths, and I understand that. And it's, it's sort of like, what I don't wanna have happen is you go away and you haven't paid your share of the open space. And I'm sure you don't wanna do that.
You know, one thing we could do.
At the same time, it's hard for you to integrate with something you don't even know what it's gonna be. I understand.
Things that we're doing in another city is just get, like, giving some money. I don't know exactly what the city has to do. But we could give our portion in money to the city for a future park if we can't make it work. That's what we're doing in another city.
Here with Nilson's one. The other part we have to be aware of is it isn't really, there's not a lot of width to where the residential area is. So whatever park you end up with is gonna be kinda long and skinny. And I'd rather see two smaller fat parks than I would just a long skinny.
That's why this one, I kinda, I wrote that off as that's a good detention basis.
That's fine. So it might have to be.
I know you put park on it, but it really functionally, it's not very.
We're, we're really not, we're not gonna dodge the park. We just know that we all have to figure out how this will make sense. And, and where we don't know the challenges of the next pieces, I mean, just even the soil challenges or anything. We, it's hard for any of us to say where we could have a 10-acre parcel that we could be a part of. So it, we're open to solutions and whatever we wanna come up with, we're fine with that.
You probably can't see it all that well and I don't know how blow it up. So this is the portion where it has the two 10-acre parks or one 20-acre. And if you look at, and I don't have myself oriented now, if you look at their, where their piece sits, I mean, there may be a quarter of all of that.
I'd say closer to a fifth. I've, but, but.
So we have to be cautious, I mean.
I mean, it's a discussion we've had. Jared hit me up early on it and said, you know, we, we, we talked about it. But I think we lessen things out here because for this very reason, we're, we're, we know we gotta get to this point with you to, to discuss. What's the best way to tackle that?
I'd also like to see on kind of like future iterations of this, how you would, because this is a future trail network along here.
Yep.
And your plans for tying into that and give me, I mean, you've got one here, I guess.
That's what those dash lines are, trails on the city.
Yeah, that's what these are. Well, I think we need to get over, pardon me, I think we wouldn't mind getting over through that, uh, through this. Even if this was to stay, we can probably, I mean, we're getting out there, we could get over there as well. Yeah, that's what this is. Yep.
And one of the things I, I would, would mind discussing is potential smaller parks, but amenities. You know, swing sets, playground equipment, uh, pavilions.
Pickleball courts.
Triple ball.
Not as though put them in.
Those aren't cheap.
But they're real.
You know, me, you know, I put a big screen TV and I'm happy. But those are the things I think I would be willing personally to trade off.
Okay, so.
I, I think what we've always agreed on as a commission is that what's in the park is more important than just uh, 10 acres of green grass.
Sure.
Saying, okay, maybe it is a four or five acre park, but gosh, we've got a pickleball court or we've got a pavilion or we've got something they can use, make it usable.
Right now, I'm looking at this and you have 284 units and a small todd lot.
For sure, yeah.
Right? Single-family dwellings, multifamily. There's just no way that's, in my opinion, gonna work.
Yeah.
Look at the demand on a park you create with this. It's small.
We, we do recognize that. We, we talked to Geneva about this. We're not, this isn't for this whole place. But we also don't know, this is a great discussion to have. We don't know where. I mean, we're open to doing, that's what Jared's saying, do we, do we wanna do a few? One of the things we have here is looking through your, uh, looking through this is that the want and the need. I mean, you guys have some passion, it looks like, on some 55 and older for something for some disabled or whatever. And we feel like we can make that work in here and that's what this represents. And so we will have some HOA, uh, we can have some HOA over here and there's, there's, some of these spaces only serve those. Some you wanna create where it's like, it seems unlikely that other residents from around the city would come, but we can look at, is there something we can do for that or do we just wanna service just this or whatever? And, and that's all up for debate and opinion.
See, I think essentially located where parents can go for a walk with their kids in a stroller and come here and, you know, have them located somewhere in the middle of each section.
And I think it really does.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're optimistic that sooner or later we'll have access to the canal. And so that's, that's our big north, north-south corridor through all of Far West, you know? So this is of no small importance, this trail inter, you know, connection.
Would you like us to try to do a few more pockets to get up to some type of percentage that would, that doesn't add to the overall two big ten-acre parks? Would you like us to try some concepts to look at?
Could, could we just back off? I mean, you've mentioned another concept and I think it deserves considerable discussion and that is contribute, your contribution to a bigger park that may not be on this parcel versus your constructing parks on this parcel. That's going in two different directions. I'm not saying we can't do some of both, but I think we ought to have both discussions simultaneously because maybe we'll end up with both pieces.
We, we did that in another city just because we had something similar to this. A little bit more, they just didn't want, if they were going to do a bigger park, they didn't want it right there. But it, it can be kind of similar because we just don't have the availability to have the space. We can't, it, it's, it's somewhat similar, but it can put the city at ease a little bit. Like you said, that, hey, these guys just getting a fat cat and left and we don't want to do that. You don't want us to do that. So if you guys, we don't have to come to that conclusion today, but if that's a direction you want to go, we're more willing to, to look.
Now, the counterargument to that is this. We don't know when this other piece will be developed. There will be some urgency for these people to have a park as soon as they can. Because, you know what I'm saying? So the idea of, well, you don't build a park, you just contribute a lot to some park in the future. That may be a piece of it, but I think there has to be a significant contribution here too.
Two parts where one, whatever is approved in open space and parks is this, is to serve the community here. And then maybe there is a fee that's associated with a future park overall.
Further down here, yeah.
Yeah, something that, okay, this serves your community. Maybe it's four acres or two, two acre, something serves your community, meets your open space, but then you contribute to something down the line when it all comes together.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that is still a Liam question too, because.
Yeah, it is. The, you know, we mentioned light manufacturing, which can be. I'm assuming you've got lots of creative ways of using that commercial other than that.
Okay.
Because we do need to have that discussion.
This is an area that I knew we needed to have a discussion on. And I'll just give you where we, where we really are coming from. Again, we're doing some of this type of product that I know that every city likes to see right now up there in, in Pleasant View. And I like it and we've, we've filled it right up and it's great and it's, it's nice. I do not feel like that type of product can work in here. I get that, the, I get what you're doing with this mixed use, but this particular parcel, I don't feel serves that.
I, I will give you that. If you look at the Randall property, it's bounded by twenty-seven hundred north and south, two thousand west on the east. It's open access on two sides. It's got schools and, I mean, it's a completely different parcel. So understand, and I'll be the first to say that, when we developed this, this ordinance, that was our model we were looking at. That doesn't mean it's cast in cement. Uh, and in fact, I, I looked at this and my initial reaction was, and somebody will probably disagree with me, given the location that is in Far West and so forth, putting the commercial on that end, if it's not going to be retail stores and restaurants and ice cream shops, probably isn't a bad place to put it. Still have serious heartburn about light manufacturing.
I want to, I, I'll add to that. Our city, the last two years, we have relied heavily on our income, or not our, our, um, sales tax revenue for our budget. And it is made up like, it has been the deciding factor between raising the residence taxes or, or, and it has saved us and it has allowed us to maintain our, our tax rate and, and keep low taxes here. And part of that is that commercial element and, and that calculation that went into when we did our general plan. This is how much commercial we need to feed that tax base to keep, you know, to keep us in the, to keep our residence taxes low. And it, that doesn't come from light industrial.
I know. That's a hard part. We're a part of one of those in Marriott Slade right now. It, it, it has its pros for the area because, but I understand that from a, from the standpoint, I mean, you guys probably love to have a hotel, another hotel or something in the city or whatever, but that would, that would be great, but.
It's stick, it's a sticky situation.
It's hard because even from an investor standpoint, even if, say I want to keep a few of these lots or something, or if I sold them off, I do not want my name on something and I do not want something that's just going to fail. I've seen some of these, tried these, uh, out West Haven. They've tried to have some of those types of businesses, like you're saying, in these areas. And they just can't get the exposure that they need and it's just, it just didn't make sense. And so I understand where you're coming from, wanting the taxes. Probably, I, I want some more feedback on, are you worried about, um, the appeal of it as well? But probably more taxes than anything, but I, I don't, I just don't feel like we can get exactly what you want in there. But I do feel like we can get this, something like this done. We can beat it up a little bit and see what we can do to where it can ease that concern of yours, but I really don't feel comfortable putting the daycare, the, or, um, I mean, the, the restaurants and the, uh, those types of businesses in there. I just, I, I would, as an investor, I would be, I would run away from that. So, but I do know what you're saying. So I don't know if we can find some type of like ground there.
What about flex space?
That is like.
That is what, that's what this.
Yeah, but I mean, but it doesn't have to be light manufacturing. It could be, you could do warehouse and a lot of other stuff. You know, e-commerce, there's a lot of stuff you can.
Where did, yeah, where did light industrial or manufacturing come from? Where did?
Well, I, we're in the process of working on an ordinance to try to define that more clearly. Your version of light and my version of light may be astronomically different.
I'll tell you, so, because we have it here right now. In fact, we have a building right down in the cul-de-sac by Peterbilt right there in Marriott Slade, it'll be between there and Maverick. That is, we can change a few things. We can probably handpick. I feel like the product will sell. That's why we're not scared to even start from this end. That gets rid of one of your concerns, but that's probably what would work really well there. And that's what is in our mind. Uh, if you go back there and look at Peterbilt, I have the building back there. Um, there's, I, I know you don't make as much off the taxes when you get trades in there, but there are trades. There's HVAC people, there's that. And I know that's not the most attractive thing to you, but I don't know what your other concerns are when you think of, like you said, I don't know what your definition of light and heavy is.
Well, and I would encourage everyone to go drive through where Peterbilt and O'Reilly's are because it is a beautiful commercial subdivision. And just because they're trades and things doesn't mean we still don't get sales tax. And I think that's a hard line sometimes. There is still like, O'Reilly's is still going to be a sales tax. You can get vendors that sell parts and things that are going to have point of sale transactions.
The, the, and I believe the ordinance says light manufacturing with associated retail. I love that associated retail. I, I'm not, I don't want it to be a manufacturing, and this gets at the retail. If you manufacture and sell it someplace else, we don't see a ta, bit of tax in that. If it's a light manufacturing with associated retail, my, my con, my, uh, opinion of that is quite different actually.
Well, and a lot of what you're talking about, light manufacturing and your flex space go hand in hand. They are the same thing. So they're still going to have a little, may not retail, but an office space, which is technically commercial.
There'll be a lot of office space in there. Most of these buildings will have offices.
You understand a small, poor community doesn't want to give up revenue.
I, I understand.
We, we kind of hold that dear and our citizens do also, because every time they're asked for a tax increase, they really take it to heart. So, so you understand why we're, there's a little push and shove on this.
We see some of the other property you have on twenty-seven hundred and I hope if that gets built out, I, you know, I wish I owned land on that. I, we're not afraid of that type of, we have some really good contacts in that. We've filled up these ones. I mean, we're, we'll, we'll bring in, just in our first three buildings right now, bringing in nine tenants that have food and stuff and that's really needed. In fact, all of you will be up there. It, it's nice. It, it's, it's great and we're not afraid of that. I am afraid of it in here. Uh, but I, but I, I don't know if we can change some things to encourage where you can get a little more sales tax. And I don't know where, someone can probably educate me more on the warehousing side of it, but I definitely could. I, I think we can make it, the curb appeal very nice. And we can control all of that. I think it can flow into this and be a nice buffer. I do know, get to the public hearing, people hate townhomes and stuff. I think we can work all that together towards all acceptable and actually flows nice and you're proud of it and we are as well. But I, we knew that this was going to be quite a sticking point. Just to begin with though, these three, Bonavista and the Fire District, and then this is an excavation, which you don't want some off of that right there. That's kind of problematic correct there. But they all need bad, Bonavista needs this bad. They need to dr- drill a new well and stuff. And we're willing to work with them, which kind of serves all of us.
That where your eleven comes from. I kept counting eight down here and you say eleven. So those are your other two units, those.
Oh, they'll have to, yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize. I couldn't, I didn't understand where.
I tried to have him color, uh, do that and it didn't turn out exactly like I pictured.
He's just talking lot numbers.
Yeah, but I was just talking lot numbers. Yeah. And I, the count was three short. Now I know where.
This is one typical in the new spot. This is our property.
Yeah.
These are all.
That's what I mean is that makes sense because that's their building right there.
We're trying to help them here and help this whole situation.
Yeah.
So we're trying to give this just to help everyone. And I think that's just our entry. I mean, we, if, if you want, we even own this product. We can kind of phase that for some of those products. But no one's going to go eat behind Bonavista, you know, or whatever.
Or an excavation company.
That's true.
Barbecue.
But I also think a lot of times, and you guys know I will always see the opposite of you guys on this one, there is still sales tax in these trades that will go here.
Yeah.
There is still, I mean, we hit, hit it so hard that there won't be, and there really is. Drive down through some of those. I mean, those, even those HVAC guys, they are paying sales tax. I mean, there is stuff there and I know it's not equivalent to a restaurant, but I would rather see a business, a business that's there for ten, fifteen years than one that changes every six months.
That's what I'm worried about. I don't want it to turn into something that's just not working no matter who goes there and then gets run down. That is a true fear of mine because I, and I also feel like if something does better.
I mean, if I were a small business starter, I don't know that I'd want to be down there. I rely on visibility.
Well, and that's, no one's, yeah, no one's going down here that needs visibility and that, that will always be the problem.
Here's the other part though. Okay, so let's say that none of that works here. You know, I wish it could give you more money, but this product, not only do I think we just put it there, I thought it'll be really, really, really well there. So that product will actually thrive. It will, it'll be exactly, I mean, I would love to be there with my building I have right now. I just love that. But I know about Tim that wants something like that.
Well, just be a little more specific when you say this product will thrive. What?
Just like a flex space, um.
Want me to help you out? In my, my line of work, Lou, if I was looking at this.
Right, I'll take care of the horticulture aside. You take care of that.
If I was looking at this and they said you can buy, you know, three phases, you can take this commercially, you can take the townhomes, patio homes or the residential, I would take this tomorrow.
As a developer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because this can be filled so fast, probably faster than you'll ever see these get filled.
I don't have any trouble with what you're saying on that.
Yeah.
I, I just, and I realize the lofty concept of a nice little plaza with ice cream shops and small stores around it is probably antiquated and somewhere in the clouds. But, but that was where, that was what we were aiming for. And I guess you're going to have to beat me pretty hard to convince me that that doesn't exist.
Well, I think, like I said, I hate getting heated at worst. We're doing this, and what's interesting is we're doing these buildings, I'm keeping them. We're bringing these tenants and stuff in. I'm saying, I tell my agent, no, I'm, I selfishly, he's like, yeah, but look at their finances. I said, I know, I want this restaurant up here because I live here. And so I like that. I like having ice cream shop somewhere to go and some for the residents. It benefits the city. We understand that one hundred percent. We don't own a property in the city where I, if I own something on twenty-seven hundred, I think that would, we could come in.
You don't like trying to do it on the back forty.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
But I, I don't follow any one here. You guys have a tough job in deciding what happens. I, I, I wish I had a piece somewhere that they're doing really well. These little places right here, the population's growing and these little shops and everything. They are fun when they work. They have their challenges, but you know, what they call that, anything else, they, they can become, but they, they do add such a nice deal to the city. I wish I could help more back with what the vision of you're saying, but I, we just feel that we don't have that here. We have all the other pieces. I feel like the way that everyone feels about, you know, density and everything, I cannot think of a better place in the city for density personally. I mean, I, like I said, I've been in, I've lived in the city for a long time, right here local, and I'm not just trying to say because we have this. It's, it's kind of bad and it's, uh, it, it doesn't impact a lot of people. I don't know that a lot of people would notice it there. And we're, we'll show you through our vision of what that would look like. Not that it, this has a chance of actually being some of the nice houses in the city. Like, I'm not just saying that. We'll show you what we're after. But I feel like it's perfect in so many regards, just not that type of use on the first site.
I will say this, if we have to send up a trial balloon for townhouses, this is probably one of the best places in Far West we could do it.
I agree.
Yeah, I very much agree with that. Okay, just so that we use our time wisely, what input can we give them that we would like to see in the next rendering?
One, I have just one follow-up question. When I checked, it looked like this, is this parcel still owned by Peterson?
We, that's our family.
Oh, okay.
So we're just a joint convention together.
I just didn't see their signature on the lease on, so I wanted to make sure the application and.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
So maybe just like a, a letter from them.
Yeah.
Uh, to attach to it so we know that we're not, where we're zoning with the permission of them.
And then we'll try to, um, we'll get this app. It's just awkward for me to make a piece there.
And then I'd like to see then to what Geneva was saying, I'd like to see, um, some calculations on that fifty-fifty being that it's a, uh-huh. Like you're fifty percent residential, fifty percent, and that is of the whole development. So.
So where that was on Randall Acres, where that was the requirement for that specific site, instead of, that was best with this site. Do you want more of that type of commercial or do you want more of the residential?
I'm not.
Where we, where we don't think that type of commercial, you know, retail pads of the ice cream shops and stuff will necessarily work here. Do you want more of that commercial product of flex space or do you want more of the residential?
If it's not more residential than it's, than, than.
I think it's like sixty-six, thirty-four.
Yeah, the, the fifty-fifty is an interesting thing. We, uh, we're still fighting the paranoia about townhouses. Okay? And one of the things that we thought would ease the pain is if you had this kind of community concept with the central plaza and you had commercial, it wouldn't be too offensive to have some townhouses as part of that complex. Obviously, we're talking about something very different now. I think we're still going to hear plenty from the public about townhouses. But the advantage you have here is you have M-one on this side and undeveloped A-one on the other side. That's why I said this is a good place to try it because we're not putting it, butting against an existing residential zone right now. That doesn't mean there's not going to be noise.
I hope that whatever we decide is best to be that fifty-fifty, depending on what everyone really feels. So hopefully that, that's not some of the sticking point that makes it hard. But if we have to do that, that's fine. But maybe we have a little bit more, you know, in other concepts, but just trying to kind of phase this the right way. Putting this up against here because we're already going to get some, I don't know that a lot of people, I, people love the idea of fifty-five dollar. Uh, we can't quite service this whole thing and that, you know, and plus.
You've got a lot of boomers. They need houses too.
A lot of people were, I mean, it's time for the city to do something. I know, you know, it's coming at some point. I just want, we just want it the right way. But that fifty-fifty, maybe that's something we'll work with. I don't know.
And then on top of that, I'd just like to see, because it is the one acre, not to exceed six dwellings per acre of development. And so just not having any way to ground truth that here would be helpful.
Sure.
I mean, this is just an idea on a smaller park, but I would see with that many townhomes in this area, it'd be really nice to see.
Something like that. Maybe have a park in the middle. That's a good idea, right? In the middle. Yeah.
Especially if there might be other families in there anyway. That seems like an ideal spot to me to break up some of that density and put in a green space or something.
Let us mess around with the green space a little bit to see if we can grow up with something that you.
And even maybe like a path system through some of this.
I think.
Just because those get narrow. Just because those get narrow with, you know, narrow roads and.
The fifty fifty is an interesting concept. It was.
Let me talk on that for just a second. Right now they have approximately seventy-nine point three eight acres. Uh, calculating that minus the Bonavista and the Weaver County Fire, twenty-three and a half acres of, uh, commercial. Fifty-five point nine acres of residential. So we're not even close to fifty-five.
But remember, this is a concept. They're here for a discussion.
No.
I understand that, but I'm just pointing out what they showing, discussion wise, they're not even close to the fifty.
Well.
We, we could potentially, if we don't give these to Bonavista, we get twenty-six over here. So based on those numbers, thirty-three percent.
Sure, I'm just saying, with what we're seeing right here.
But they're not gonna give these to these folks. They're selling it to them, so this should be included as part of that shit.
Yeah, that is true.
These are gonna be pads that will sell.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is they're not gonna give them away. So you've got to add those in.
Yeah, so like I said, right now, just right now, about thirty-three percent is commercial right now. So we're off by seventeen percent right now. If we want to push more commercial into this, we can.
Well, I think that brings up an interesting concept too, because if we're worried about the commercial, I mean, is it a fifty-five? I, I don't know, because a lot of this would alleviate a lot of our moderate income stuff. And we have a perfect opportunity in the city, in the place in the city to have an option at that. So is it a little bit different ratio in this development agreement?
Well, or maybe we ought to step back and say, and reevaluate the fifty fifty and the ordinance.
I, I wanted to.
I do say the ordinance needs reevaluation.
No, no, but I mean, we, it's.
Getting on the wall, I say that a lot, but, um, what if, because this is a mixed use based on what Lou's talking about, or is there a property? Okay, are we, should we consider, um, another type of mixed use where one's more like this? And we could have one that's more of a town center mixed use, so that still would apply. And maybe another type of mixed use that could accommodate more of this, because actually more residential is probably better. Than some of this other stuff, so some of the percentages could be different, but those would be two different mixed use zones.
One of the things I would talk about, one of the things I talked about with regards to that, we only have one ordinance in place.
Right, well, we have to.
We would have to update the ordinance that orders potential lawsuits from the, from the public.
Well, of course, we would, we have it designated as mixed use for this area in the general plan. We can, just like we did when we create, came up with the mixed use ordinance in the first place, craft one.
That's what I'm saying, we'd have to craft it.
In, that would have to happen ahead of, but things like conceptual plans and all that can be in the motions of that, you know? We don't want, we're not doing this for this, but it's kind of for these types of things.
I, I like that lot, I'd like that thought, but we should talk to Liam too, because where's our movement in the development agreement too? Because can some of those changes be made in the development agreement?
Maybe.
Similar to what we experienced in the patio.
Override what stated in the ordinance.
Yeah, because that is an agreement between developer and the city and can have more specific.
I'd sure want to hear the legal applications of that.
Such a plan can drive a lot of conversation.
I think too, the bigger.
Or maybe it needs to be modified to have more of it in the development agreement, so modify the current one to be more like our patio home ordinance, which I think we learned a lot about. In being able to specify everything specific to a project in a development agreement.
And I'm gonna say this word that everybody hates, it's sort of like a plan, develop.
The R U D is what you're going in, yeah.
No, not P U D, everybody.
Oh, so you, the route he always goes.
I would say too, if we're gonna craft an ordinance where we allow varying sizes of commercial versus residential, that the bigger, bigger the residential, the more open space we've got to have.
Absolutely.
We'll grow that open space based on percentage of what is.
When you start looking at density, you start looking seriously at expanding the open spaces to accommodate it. You know, we've, that hasn't been in our planning process in Far West over the years. We've tried to build it into the general plan now. I'm much more concerned about the open space for this higher density. Than I am about the fact that the commercial is not integrated with this.
Yeah, there is a little bit of flexibility with, with the ultimate agreement. But we would go off of one fifth, like you said, you, did you mention four acres?
Well, that's just a, I'm just.
Let's just forget.
Yeah.
Maybe we give more there because we have more density and we create something really nice here with the green space. But if maybe it's more than four acres, but we got a little bit more, we got more than fifty percent residential, we can look at it that way. And tell, we say, well, this looks really nice. I'm happy with this. I don't know.
The fifty fifty was an arbitrary number.
Yeah.
It's not been tested. We could seriously sit down and probably debate for a considerable amount of time which way it should go.
Well, and I seriously read it to their, I apologize to them. I read it as fifty percent can't be townhomes. So I didn't, I never even caught on to that portion. There is, you can't, of the fifty percent, you can only have fifty percent townhomes.
Yeah.
So it says residential shall not, you shall not constitute, constitute more than fifty percent of the.
Then the townhomes say that that can't, that cannot be more than fifty percent of that.
The concern was very different than the contemporary market where we were worried about the residential, the commercial coming in, you know, and with one being left, left behind. That, it's almost flip-flop now, so it's not, not an issue.
The feel, I mean, at some point we need to discuss how this flows, what the feel is. I don't know that we necessarily want to make this feel like this is mainly a commercial thing with residential too. I'd rather this be a residential, nice thing, and then we do have a nice commercial that has its own paid spot and everything. So hopefully we can work on that a little bit. If we can, we'll just adjust it.
Understand this, our general plan before, all of this was residential. So all we tried to do is integrate a more innovative approach to residential, but the philosophy has always been residential be the predominant use of this land.
I don't really have a problem with the way this flows, okay? You go from residential to senior, or to senior fifty-five and older, then.
I don't like this because if townhomes are here, they exit out here, they don't interrupt, they don't bother anybody.
I want to see more, more parking, you know, more amenities is what I want to see.
See, I really like this buffer between the single-family homes and the two.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
It's perfect. It's just.
I like the.
Yeah. I like the way it's laid out.
And I think that this commercial, if we do it right and it's successful, is important because if there's a bunch of just turnover companies that are there. It's gonna kind of slow this area. People aren't gonna want to move here. So we gotta think like, this is the type for, if you're going behind Bonavista, you're not. Necessarily gonna look for ice cream place. And there's probably better places in the city. So we have to find what fits there because if that fails, I think it will hurt this whole community, you know what I mean?
It's hard also to create a center in a linear piece, you know, I mean. Which, so I'm saying, the, the rental property wasn't perfectly square, but it's a heck of a lot more square than this is, so.
On, on the open space in the parks, do you want these public spaces or HOA private for this, this area?
That's beyond us right now. I'm not sure.
Okay, as a developer, I sometimes hate when I give stuff to the city and they don't take care of it. And all the same happens to the city.
I can tell you the townhomes probably will have to be in HOA.
And I hate to say that I've seen HOA's full and that it's not getting taken care of.
True.
Right.
So, we've got to figure out what we're doing here.
But I, and I think, yeah, if you look really closely at the ordinance too, and it'll, it kind of, and I know we're just starting the discussion here, but. Yeah, as long as in the process, we kind of get all of the details that are, that are requested in that ordinance, so. The, you know, the signage elements, the landscaping, the building, building styling.
And I did add in the Dropbox in this agenda meetings file, I added the photos that they sent over, so you can get an idea. They'll have, as we, I just today, because we were gonna present them up here.
You want to look at them?
There's a ton of them, but you can go look at them. They're coming back, because this is not like a final all meeting, okay?
Don't do it the day of our meeting.
And they'll have final, actual, real renderings when we get to the point, but those give you some ideas.
Once you did too, give you some traction, we're all agreeing, there are some really nice concepts we can do, some 3D concepts, or we can do some flyover. I mean, we can really see that there would this would look like on the street, going, moving through it, there would be more.
Like I said, I mean, the things that I'm looking at are open space parks with amenities for families, okay? Uh, because I'm a big guy, and I'll be the first to admit it, I like to have some benches on the trail system, so if I go walking around there to get the shape, I have a place to sit, okay? Uh, like some trees along there, you know, for some shade.
Lighting.
Lighting. We don't want to create, I was like, well, I used to work for Solly County, and we actually created a rake corridor. Okay, in between two houses with six-foot fences. We put a trail system in there. I don't want to see that, because you go in there and you hide, okay? Thank goodness it never happened while I worked there, but that was one of the big concerns that I had.
I think also, you know, when you're considering open spaces, amenities that maybe address the higher density part. Versus the possibility of a, of a more generally used open space for this vast acreage, you know what I'm saying? I mean, they're, they're not both, they're not the same agenda necessarily, if you understand what I'm saying.
This also opens up opportunities for us when that next section gets developed, not only fill it out, but we'll have a population here for frontage for some of those, you know, ice cream shop, ideal, uh, type areas as well.
And I think too, and this is my big pet peeve, is that we don't want to cram in so much of these that people are parking on the streets. So it looks good and I'm just.
And the ordinance. Addressed at that point in the development of the flight. This is just a.
There's neighborhood streets and, and Peter's streets will have to treat very differently.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap this up. Does that give you guys enough guidance to kind of?
You, I'll just quickly say this. So we go back to here and work on our open space, get some of the answers.
To get percentages, all of that.
Let us look at this a little bit, maybe we'll, we'll tweak it up some, we'll look at our parking needs, just so we can address that a little bit. Is that enough to get started on?
And maybe a little, so if your ratios aren't, they don't come out to fifty fifty, maybe a nice explanation of, hey, here's where we really think. This would benefit. We're at fifty-five, but this adds here and we've, we're able to have, you know, a four-acre park here, you know? Just a nice explanation of why you would request that more density or more, uh, percentage.
Understand though, the development plan approval precedes the rezoning. Okay, I just wanna, I don't want you to, I look at our agenda and I think, well, that's not gonna work.
We, the mayor and I talked about that portion and in the meeting, we'll give them the opportunity to hold, because I, and even Katie and I talked about this. I think there is still a need for public input on some of this, that I don't want them to get all the way through the process just with us, to then six months down the road, go to a public hearing. And all of a sudden, new things are adjusted and.
The more open discussion you can have, the better. Just.
You have more than one.
Exactly.
Just don't put, just don't put decision on the agenda, you know?
Yeah, and that's the thing.
If you don't, if you don't give them enough, if we, I would see if we gave them to the, this to the public right now, like pitchforks and flames.
Yeah, I agree.
Giving, uh, but we had talked too about notify, in the notification to the, the residents, explaining the process, because I think a lot of misinformation comes there. And then knowing that this is not the, the last opportunity for you to.
Well, and that brings.
Be several checkpoints.
That brings up another thing with, I think there's enough changes in this that I would maybe think about tabling your rezon and maybe push it another. Let, let's go through one more iteration of this, just because I, I think there's enough that will change that you don't need to get the public worked up about it. But I'll leave that up to you tonight. If you don't want to, we can still hold it. But I think with your next version with more numbers, open space, density, I think it'll be a cleaner public hearing.
I mean, I, what we can do, whatever you suggest, we just can do that, uh, so that's fine. I do feel like, you know, we've been through a lot of public hearings and stuff, so we'll just know that, I don't know what we do. That's what's hard about even showing them this, because we can think about this, we can work on this for years, probably our first public hearing of the year, people are just bringing things for us.
Yeah, but you, you'll also get some good feedback too, from, from the public as well, yeah, so.
I know at some point, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll get good feedback from those that go on, but we can, we can push down the road or we're the first one to do it.
Well, I think that maybe this one might not be the first one you want them to see, where you have enough changes.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Right.
Not with the uncertainties in this. I think that'd be very premature.
Let us, uh, let us go back and see how we can fix this a little bit, just more green space and more.
We'll discuss it in the agenda and then we'll.
Yeah, good to see you guys. Thank you. And you don't, you guys want to keep all these?
I hate, I hate to tell you to take them. You can.
Got some notes on it, just calculations.
We don't want this to get out.
I want to see the next.
Yeah, there you go, you might want to take it. Okay, I got to use the.
Don't lock yourself over there.
What?
So don't lock yourself over there.
Uh, Brandon. Mr. White signs. Okay, so I'm excited for you guys to enjoy that fishing club. I got your email.
Okay.
She, it's gonna be good.
Is she supposed to do minutes? I sent McKinsey some new minutes.
Yeah, she sent about your direction.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, I'm still hearing.
Oh, you're fine. I got mine. I print everything off.
What, you mean you don't want it that way?
No, I don't.
Come on.
I also don't want, is that warm?
There, excuse me.
Have the camera show the audience, the scene of us this time.
Am I good now? I'm just going with whoever I call on for the prayer and the pledge allegiance, so go with it. Okay.
What's that? No, I thought it meant, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Lyle and a prayer by Brandon. Anyone stand?
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind, gracious, heavenly Father, we're indeed grateful for this beautiful day and this opportunity we have to meet together as a planning commission. We're grateful for this beautiful city and for all the residents that live in it. Please bless us as we go throughout this meeting that we'll be able to keep in mind there. Best in, best, um, the things that are best for them and help us to, um, keep in mind. All of the needs of the city and the residents, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Okay, moving on to public comment. Is there any comment from the public not related to an agenda item? Next report from City Council.
Okay, this is the report from last week, the seventeenth of August for our City Council meeting. Very important piece of business. We presented the trophy for the guns and hoses softball turn, game. We got the report from the Planning Commission. We, um, gave some assignment and direction for the Planning Commission. Just reminding you of the February first deadline for the subdivision committee. I mean, that's in the future, but just to keep in, in mind. And then we are having that September seventh work session at five thirty. We approved amendments and bills. We did table a business license application. We just had some questions and the applicant wasn't there. Uh, we had a public hearing to consider the approval of boundary adjustment between Marriott, Saterville and Far West. We did approve that. That's something that had been in the works. Didn't get done, so we were just kind of redoing it. Um, and then we approved an ordinance with amendments to. The municipal code on existing utilities. It adds an inspection of existing sewer lines and utilities to the current code. And then just, just an item of interest on our report on assignments. There's talk about a possible countywide campaign to like to encourage reporting, um, ADUs, so that's something our city has struggled with, so. We'll kind of keep an eye on what, if the county comes up with something. Um, and then our code enforcement. Seems to be going well. We have an online reporting form that residents can use. And that's really all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, our first business item, a public hearing to consider and take action on the request to rezone. Cameron Watson property located at approximately twelve forty-five North, two thousand West from R one fifteen to C two. Yeah, did I miss something?
No, just a minor.
Okay, twelve forty-six. Okay, that's okay. Um, do we have a motion to go into the public hearing?
I am going to a public hearing.
A second.
By Greg, second by Darren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in the public hearing. Um, Jordan, do you want to come up and just give a brief description of what's going on?
Yeah. This is perfect. You got this already up there. Hi, I'm Jordan Watson. What we are requesting is to rezone this property to C two, which is, um, the same zoning of our project that is adjacent to this property. Uh, this property is owned by my family. The purpose of rezoning this is it allows us to complete our park and add a fourth building to our, to our business park here. Also just gives a lot better layout in general to the park. It gets rid of a residential property off of the old highway, which UDOT is absolutely in favor of. So yeah, that's it unless you have any questions.
You're incorporating a parcel.
Sorry?
You're incorporating the residential parcel into your commercial.
We are. Yep, the outlined in highlighted piece there is the current property that we're trying to rezone.
And this went originally from a larger building and two smaller buildings to four smaller buildings.
It did. And actually, it kind of a blessing in disguise. It just laid out a lot better this way. Gives us the ability to bring in additional tenants, uh, rather than have to rely on, on one tenant to take down a really big building. We've, we're proposing four identical buildings. It looks great. We've got a site plan application in, so you'll see the rendering soon enough, but, uh, really like how it's come together. UDOT is in favor of the access across from Westwood Village there. Uh, so yeah.
I would agree. It looks much better layout. Okay, you can have a seat for a minute. Is there anyone in the public, sorry, in the public that would like to make a comment? If we don't have any, we can close the public hearing.
All right, can we close the public hearing?
Motion by Greg, second by Lou. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on next to the recommendation to city council, approval or denial of the request, uh, to rezone at approximately twelve forty-six North, two thousand West from R one fifteen to C two.
I'll make a motion to the city council to approve the request to rezone the Cameron Watson property. Parcel given, locate approximately twelve forty-six North, two thousand West from R one fifteen to C two.
Motion by Darren.
A second.
Second by Brandon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, set a public hearing for September fourteenth to consider the request of a rezone for the parcels located at approximately eighteen hundred North, twenty-one seventy-five West from R one fifteen and A one zones to mixed use zone. And Jared might want to come up and have some input too, but this one, there was a little confusion on the process of this. So we're gonna give, how, how do you feel after? So they've been to a work session earlier. What is your feel on the public hearing? Do you have, I know the council will have a feel or the commission will have a feel one way or the other, but what, what do you feel after the work session?
You let us go back and make some of those adjustments that were talked about and then we'll, then we'll go for the public hearing after that.
I really like that because I, I hate to throw something out because people get their hands on one item and they will carry that for the next year. So I like that idea, especially with just a few of the minor changes. But you guys, however you feel.
I would like to recommend we table this, rezone until such time as we get to review the new, the new conceptual drawings.
A second.
Complete the process in accordance with the ordinance.
Motion by Greg, second by Lou. Hold on. On that, sticking to timelines, because I like timelines. When, and maybe you just reach out to me, when do you think you'll have those updated? Like, when do you want me to put you on?
Should have those within the next two weeks.
Okay. Then why don't we stay in communication and then after we have a joint work session in Sep, the beginning of September? So it might be like maybe the meeting toward the end of September. But we can circulate things in the meantime too. So, okay.
That's great.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jared, and thank you for the work session. I appreciate that, or we all do. Okay, next, recommendation to the city council, final or final approval or denial of Hart subdivision phase four. Does Cecil want to come up and explain what you're doing?
I don't know if there's any questions. I think some of the issues has been.
Scroll, huh?
Roll up one more, I guess. That one?
Where's all the?
I'm gonna want to stop.
I think it's back.
You want the top one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the top one. Showed the grading easement, didn't it?
Very, very top.
Okay, yeah, one more. One more. There we go. What happened to the grading that was on there?
The easement's right there.
The one on the far.
The crosshatch pieces.
Yeah, so we had contours on earlier.
Go up one more page. That would be.
One drawing with contours on that.
I'm gonna want to stop. Not here, right? Right here?
I don't. Explain the, the things you've sensed.
Okay, so on twenty-nine hundred North, going to the east against the canal, we would dedicate that sixty-six foot right away to the city. But we don't know if or when that bridge will be built, but that will be stubbed and dedicated the property to the city. There was question on who maintains that. The city, uh, through our work session, I think it's a decent idea that we allow the property owners to maintain and use that. No structures can be built and we would put a note on the plat to that effect. And then also have it in our title work. And you brought up too, there's that easement there that's could be used in the future for a fill easement and that would stay on the plat. And I think we'd put it in our title work too, so if those lots ever sold, it's on the plat. It's in the title work that it's spelled out. So if someone buys.
The property owners know what could happen.
Correct, yes. And we want to make that very clear.
Makes sense to everyone.
You're not gonna build a fill.
What's that?
You're not gonna build a fill.
No, we'd gone over that back and forth, but without a design on that bridge to know what type of fill, where the abutments will be. I mean, I think it would almost be a waste. You, you could end up digging some of it.
I disagree with you.
Some of it out or no?
Nate actually approved. He does not want the fill there. He prefers it, yeah.
But I.
Because we did, they came to development meeting last week and we talked about that exact thing and, and Nate was pretty clear. He doesn't want, because it could be ten years away. He's like, that does us no good for it to sit there and.
Because the ten years, the ten years, the city now has to do it.
Well, yeah.
At what, at what cost to the taxpayer.
But how are they gonna fill it when we don't have elevations of the actual canal?
If we go up and have to fill a little bit more or cut down a little bit, it's a heck of a lot easier to deal with than if it's not there at all.
Then it becomes less usable for the residents around it that are going to incorporate it for maybe five, ten years.
See, I, I would argue the other way around. It lets the property owner use it for five, ten, fifteen, maybe infinity, where they wouldn't be able to use it at all.
And I understand both sides to that. Maintenance wise, if there's some gravel fill, like those residents wouldn't be able to put a garden or say something like that. I know no structures would be built there. I understand his point too about having it there, but without a design and the elevations.
I just see it as one more stub into the canal, like everything else we have on that side of the canal.
And it, it would be a dedicated stub to the city.
We have those already.
But it would be ma- maintained by those.
And the city will own it.
Property owners.
And then the city has to build the fill and do all the retaining and all that other stuff with the design.
Right.
Ten years down the road, which is gonna cost a what? Costs around, costs are through the roof now in construction.
So are you talking about fill or fill in a retainer wall?
I'm talking about fill.
Is that that expensive?
It can be.
I don't weigh that against the loss of use of the land. I, I don't think that's a very good exchange.
There may never be a bridge across there.
And to see that.
You just gotta rent the people to jump the canal on their motorcycle. If we're not gonna put a bridge across there, then why do we go through all the trouble of making twenty-nine fifty?
But.
A wider road with bike lane anticipation.
Well, and that subdivision has already been preplanned for that wider road and we're there. And it's not the fact of, we, we don't have the say in the bridge going over there. We've preplanned if we can get one. We've done the best that we can as the city.
We'll get the fill put in there now so that when we go to this, or when we go to the Bureau of Land Management, we have an argument that the permits, for permits to get the bridge across there.
Yeah, but.
Because we're gonna have to get the person on the other side to have pitch, pitch in on the bridge as well.
You know, as best as I do, you dump fill on there and we have no elevations, no knowledge of what that bridge is gonna look like. That does us minimal in ten years.
Bit, because the engineered fills there.
Yeah.
And now all we have to do is trim it to grade.
They won't accept it. We gotta take it all out.
Because it's gonna have, it's gonna go in as an engineered fill.
Yeah.
If you look at the drawings, which will be compacted it, coverage lifts all the way up.
And then you're saying the homeowners have to sit next to that for ten, fifteen years, don't get to touch it.
Well, that's.
And it becomes.
How would you like, how would you like to keep the weeds out of that chunk of your property on a slope?
If I bought the lot and that was there, it would be my responsibility to know it was there.
But now you can.
I know what I'm buying into. Right now, they're gonna get a flat piece of ground that they're gonna use, okay? They're gonna have no idea what this is gonna look like in the future.
As opposed to living.
Build the fill there, at least they'll know what they're getting into when they, when they move in there.
They're gonna be well aware. They know exactly when they close on the lot, they'll know that they don't own it. They can fence it, they can use it, they can't put permanent structures on it and that it can be taken back at any point.
And then there'll be a ten foot wall there or a ten foot fill there.
Well aware that there is a canal eventually planned.
I disagree with it.
And what they'd have to live with now is a weed filled slope for who knows how many.
I disagree with it.
Well, who's gonna try, you ever tried to till a slope?
I have.
Fun, isn't it?
It is.
Okay, enough. Okay, moving on. Is there any other questions for Cecil?
One, one, I just have one comment about if, by having it in the title and having it disclosed, then if that property changes hands, the homeowner, the new homeowner will know exactly what that property is used for.
Yeah, and that's why I, we will do a two-step. It'll be on the notes of the plat that's recorded. Regarding lots one oh five and one oh six, also in the title work.
Exactly.
Spelled out, because we want that too. So we don't want to sell a lot to somebody that doesn't know everything about it. That they know that's a possibility in the future. That's not their property. It's city property. There could be a, a bridge coming across there one day. And I, I, if there's other ways to help protect that, but I think with those two things, the plat and then the title work on those lots.
Yep, I agree.
And on the fill, that's really up to the city on how we do that. Um, you know, I can see both sides, but if you're twenty years down the road with the, and the homeowners are gonna say, well, it's not my property. I don't want to maintain it. It's weeds. It's, we can't really do anything with it. Then it, it is city property.
They could do that now even flat, where they say it's not my property, I'm not gonna maintain it.
That's true.
They, they very much can. And I believe we.
We'll weak that.
I believe we put in that agreement though. Don't they have to maintain it?
Yeah, we'll put on the note, the use and maintenance.
I just know we spent a lot of time arguing this on the last time.
Yeah. But here's where I stand. Both Nate and Matt, our engineer, agreed they did not want the fill there. And I stand behind that.
I think it's mostly because we don't know what the design of a bridge would take.
Hundred percent just because of that.
Elevations and, um.
Well, I talked to Matt. He said it was a decision made by the planning commission chair not to put it in there.
And.
That's what Matt said.
Don't get nasty.
I'm not, I'm just telling you, that's, that's.
And Matt, in Friday's meeting, Matt specifically told us that he would prefer, he agreed with Nate. He would prefer that it did not go in and Lyle was there.
I was, I was just gonna say, I was, I was in that meeting and I heard both, they talked about it extensively and both Nate and Matt agreed, along with Jeanne even myself, that that should not be filled. It should let the homeowner maintain it, leave it as it is.
I disagree with you.
You can put my name in there if you want to say I specifically said, no, go for it.
I'm not telling you what Matt told you.
No, it was, it was a joint discussion and it was a joint agreement.
Now, the road is designed on, is it on that road going, uh, north and south? Where, where it goes across is that it is designed for that curb to already go up in anticipation. So that elevation does rise already a couple feet on that road for in anticipation.
I was wondering about that.
So there is fill there, but just not for.
Reverse curve for the road.
Yeah.
And they'll, you guys will have curb going all the way across.
Yeah.
It looked like.
The way we're gonna do is now is run the curb straight.
Yeah.
And then at such time if the bridge was.
The trajectory of the road is sort of in line with the grid.
Yeah, I think it's up.
And I'm talking the vertical trajectory, not the.
Yeah, the vertical. It, it goes up to at least two feet, maybe a little more at that point. And then we still have another hundred and fifty feet to get the rest of the rise to the, wherever the bridge level would be.
They don't have to, from that approach, they don't have to come into that road intersection. They should be able to build the design right from there. So it would all.
They don't know the elevations. I'm using your same argument against you.
Thanks, okay. We know at least it's gonna raise.
My argument is.
And he's met, to Matt's standards, he's met the elevation there, that that intersection will not change.
My argument is it's my neighborhood. I get to see it, so I don't want to.
There you go. Is there any other questions for Cecil? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Or a motion?
I recommend to the city final approval for the Hart subdivision phase four.
Motion by Lyle.
Second.
Second by Lou. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, um, consent items. Approval of the minutes dated August tenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions, changes?
Did everybody get the new one? They kicked it out?
Yeah.
And did that, did she reach all the, or did she fix all the changes?
I, I typed it all in there and sent it to her.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to make a motion then?
Uh, I have a motion that we accept the minutes from, uh, August tenth.
Well, second.
By Greg, second by Darren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, report on assignments. Uh, Brandon?
I don't have anything to report.
Lyle?
Hey, um, had a part meeting on Wednesday, yeah, last Wednesday, sorry. And, uh, we're still working on the dock out there. Uh, we're, uh, working with Tom Berkland. Uh, he's retired, but he's still working his under current, on, under consultation. And, um, Nick DeSpain is the new contact over there. He, his dad was Rob DeSpain, who was my former contact. Uh, father and son. Anyway, we're just moving forward with it, trying to get things working. It's gonna, the wheels are moving slower than I had hoped, but we're getting there. And also the registration for the fishing club is about a week and a half into it. And it's, uh, scheduled for starting September ninth from ten, nine to ten thirty and goes every Saturday until, um, September thirtieth. I don't have my notes here. I'm trying to go off my memory. But children ages six and older are eligible to join in. It's ten dollars, but it includes all kinds of stuff. The city gives us a good budget and we make sure the kids are taken care of. And all the parents have to do is just show up with their kids and that's it. So. Anyway, other than that, I think, Janelle, you'll have to help me on this, you and Ken, um, the service project request. I forgot who that was from. Oh, was it the, wasn't the, was it the, uh? Yeah, from Fremont. Can you help me on that? It's, it was just a service request project. Yeah. Right, how many, how many people did they say they had? Forty? So they were forty from the National Honor Society, from, I think Fremont High School, that has put a request in to do some service around the city. So other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Lou?
Nothing to report.
Greg?
I have been working on a list for the M one additional uses. I have it just about completed. I was gonna bring it tonight, but we had the other meeting. So if we don't have another meeting or conceptual, you can put it on the next work session. And I'll have that done and then we can all go through it and cross off what you think or we'll go from there.
I like it. Thank you for doing that. Darren?
Nothing.
Greg, welcome back. Jason?
It's me.
Um, I don't have anything to report. Development meeting on Friday, we're all things on the agenda. Um, and I just want to say I appreciate you all for coming to the work session. I think that was a really great way to start something new, so I appreciate you all. Seven. Oh, sorry, yeah, we're having a joint work session with city council September seventh, five thirty.
September sixth is.
No, it's September seventh.
I thought Ken said sixth. Sorry. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Listen to what I say.
I'm sorry.
September seventh at five thirty.
Yes.
Um, not six, five thirty, and we're gonna talk about the A one, A one R agribusiness stuff. And then they'll go into their finished work session for the rest of it, so. I think that's all we have coming up for the next month, so, okay, thank you, guys.
Motion will adjourn.
Motion by Brandon, second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
When we get back in the M one.
Yes, do you have your conditional use portion?
Well, not only that, I think we had a, I have a conditional use, I think we ought to look at the landscape.